Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, C 30 A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on a number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted with a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirements to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.schrewsburyma, Schrewsbury, Mass, MA, not spelled out, mass.gov backslash coronavirus. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by visiting www.schrewsburymediaconnection.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. To participate in the public comment portion of this meeting, dial 1-636-452-0211 and enter the PIN 419484670 asterisk. Please mute your device until I address your agenda item or open the meeting to public comment. As a preliminary matter, I am Ron Rosen, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul George?
Yeah. Lisa Cassette?
Here.
Peter Mopage?
Here.
Mary Beth Lynch?
Here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ida Swirich?
Here.
Kristen Repow?
Here.
Patty Sheen?
Here.
Good evening. The open meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed in coverage to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations on the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. The meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals is convening by Google Hangouts as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We are now returning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for the particular item or guest speaker associated with this item. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members first and then to staff members if needed, inviting each by name to write any comment or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Before that, I will open up the meeting for public comment if anyone is here for public comment. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Remember that unless a document is being shared, your camera feed is triggered by your speaking or background noise. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For others in attendance that are expected to present, please hold until your name is called to present. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. After your presentation, members of the board will be given the opportunity to ask questions. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name to afford time for any comments. For any response, please wait until I yield floor you and state your name before speaking for the accurate minutes. If members wish to engage closely with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Each vote will be taken by roll poll. First agenda, first agenda item. There's no bills or anything tonight? Okay. Twenty-seven general ad, Jessica Zorg, variance, section seven C and section six, table two for rear yard setback. Ms. Zorg has requested a continuance until August 11th, I believe at 5:30.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion to continue this hearing until, well, August 11th. You ready?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. George?
Aye.
Ms. Cassette?
Aye.
Mr. Mopage?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So this, this hearing will be continued till August 11th at 5:30. I notice there's a lot of people here. If any of you are here for the 27 general ad hearing, that's all we're discussing tonight. And we invite you back on August 11th at 5:30 when this hearing will be continuing. Our next hearing is continued from the June 20, 2020 meeting. Three 12 A South Quinzigman Ave. Jessica Cipro, two variants, special permit, section seven, table two, and section four dash B, to expand the existing structure exceeding the 50% existing area to construct the garage 26.8 feet with a three yard setback. Is Cipro here?
Mr. Chairman, Richard Ricker. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Richard Ricker, for the record, and I'm in office at 11 Maple Avenue. And Jessica and Angelo Cipro have asked me to represent them for this request. As a preliminary matter, I would point out that you should have received today a copy of the letter from Town Council relative to this proposal. With respect to one of the requests for variance, we would be suggesting and requesting that we not go forward. We withdraw the request for the variance relative to the matter of increasing the size of the house by more than 50%. According to, according to Town Council and in keeping with the Balalta case, which is the Balalta versus ZBA of Brookline, that's a 2019 case, single-family houses and two-family houses are accorded special treatment for these matters. And so a restriction such as is required in our bylaw for the no more than 50% increase does not apply and is no longer applicable in light of the decision in Balalta. According to Town Council, the owner's proposal to expand or intensify the pre-existing nonconformity relative to increasing the living space on the undersized lot is subject only to a required finding by the Board of Appeals as to whether the proposed change, expansion, enlargement is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the exist, than the existing structure. So therefore, we are left with a one request for a special permit, which is the of a nonconforming structure on nonconforming lot.
Richard, if we're not speaking, if you were not attending, please mute your telephone or mute your computer. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Did, did you miss what I was saying or?
No, no, I caught it.
Okay. Okay. So in light of the Balalta case and Town Council's opinion, we will go forward on the basis of the request for alteration of a nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot. And the second request is for the variance request for the two-car garage, which, as you know, also case law has deemed mere construction of a two-car garage to be somewhat inconsequential and not an intensification as a matter of law of nonconformities. But in this particular case, it needs the variance because it is three feet, four inches short of the frontage requirement of 30 feet. First, with regard to the special permit, and, and I would note that I believe Jessica and Angelo Cipro are probably with us by phone. So if there's any, any questions I cannot answer, then I'd ask them to do so. With respect to the Cipro's, they've lived here for a number of years. They now have four children. Thus, the reason for a request to expand their house. They love the area. They love their neighborhood. They're on the lake. It is a single level branch type structure, setback pretty good from South Quinzigman. But the nonconformity due to the setbacks and the size of the lot causes them to request a special permit in order to increase the house.
Turn off your microphone. Phone ending in three eight. Thank you.
Okay, so you have in your packets, I believe, or on your file, a copy of the elevations which show what the structure will look like if you so approve. As you can see from the plan, the plot plan that has been filed with this, the setbacks are going to remain the same with respect to the nonconforming setbacks. There will be no increasing of those nonconformities. So the increase of nonconformity here, if there is one, and if you determine there is one, is the increased living space, basically because they're putting a second floor, they're asking to put a second floor on the structure. I would suggest to you that if you look in that neighborhood, I know at least some of you, probably all of you have gone down and looked at this property. It would not be out of the norm for this house to have a second story on it. There would not be any detriment to the neighbors in any way, shape, or manner because the fact is that there's a lot of big houses down there in that, in that neighborhood, up and down that road. And it's not out of, out of the ordinary at all. In addition, they're not increasing in any substantial manner the lot coverage here. They do comply with the lot coverage requirements. This house, basically, it's putting the second story on it. It intensifies the use, yes, because there's a family living there. And yes, there will be a family living there. It's a single-family use. So the standard that you need to bear in mind here, according to Balalta case, is whether the house after modification would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would submit to you that it would not be. I would submit to you that it still remains a single-family house. These folks just want to continue to live there and not have to try to find another place in Schrewsbury where they love to live. And that this is in keeping with the neighborhood. The houses across the street are substantially raised up above them. But even so, a second story is not going to block their view. I've looked at this very carefully. I've been down there a couple of times to look at it. There's no view blocking here by virtue of a second story because behind the Cipro house, as you look at the water, is a peninsula. And on that peninsula, there are tall pine trees and other houses. And you really aren't seeing a view through those trees anyway. Their house is, is on a little alcove or a little cove that cuts off of the lake. And their house is on a very steep slope from South Quinzigman down to the water. Thus, I get to the issue of the variance. This house sits literally on the edge of a very steep slope. It slopes down to the water. The house basically is built into the side of, of the hillside. The lower level opens to the, to the water side. And there is no other place on this lot. If you look at this long, narrow lot on the plot plan, you'll see that there's no other place on this lot to put a garage. The, the house literally starts where the slope starts down the hill. And I would note also that the 24 feet approximately of, of the depth of the garage brings it out to about the same setback as the house to the north with, with which it shares a driveway and which neighbors have basically said that they were fine with this proposal. The, the fact is that we're talking about three feet, four inches. This is in terms of the neighborhood, still a pretty good setback from South Quinzigman Avenue because you'll note that along that area of South Quinzigman Avenue, there's a lot of houses that, some of which are like eight or 10 feet off of the roadway. So this is incidental to this lot substantially. There's one other house in the neighborhood that has the same problem, but none other besides them. It, it does not, I suggest, derogate from the intent of the bylaw. A two-car garage is a natural addition, as pointed out earlier. And the courts have determined it to be not an exceptional addition to a house. It is, it is determined to be a natural addition to any house. It's a two-car garage with space above it for living space. I would suggest that there is no nuisance value to this whatsoever. And there's no noise factor, there's no smoke factor, there's no nuisance factor whatsoever that you can attribute to this particular request. And again, I would point to the Balalta case relative to the special permit and the Auckland case, which you're familiar with from previous hearings relative to the, how the courts have treated historically garages. And I would suggest that I'm available for any questions you may have.
I'll go down the roster. George, any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering if, for all the hearings, we could post what's being heard, if we have any information, so people in attendance could actually see what we are talking about?
Sure. I could certainly post that. George, what, what do you want? Do you want the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, I could do that for you guys.
That's probably, one second. That's probably the most important item besides the elevations.
All right. Can you guys see all that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
None at this time.
Okay. Ms. Cassette?
So thank you for that explanation, Mr. Ricker. I have to say, I was confused initially with this application because of this plot plan. To me, it looked as if this plan were intensifying three setbacks because of the deck and also just the addition, it looked from, when I look at this plot plan, that the second story is going to shut out a little bit from what I'm assuming is the existing house with those hat hatch lines. So I was a little confused by that. But what, but your explanation is that only the setback facing South Quinzigman Avenue is being affected by the proposed garage, correct?
Right. The, there is a, a jet out, as you point out, that there's plenty of room for it on, on the other side of the house, not the, not the 6.5 and 6.
The westerly side.
The western side has, has room for a two-foot jet up, which it will.
And part of this addition does include this deck as well?
The, the deck is, is there. It is going to be rebuilt. It's, it's there now. It's an existing deck, so.
Okay, and it's going to remain in the same footprint?
Well, the, the darker line is the footprint, as I understand it, of the new deck. So it's actually coming in from up side.
Thank you. So we're going from about, for the northerly setback, the front yard setback, we're going from about 50, 51 feet to 26.8.
Right. And the, I had setback is 30, right?
Thank you.
Mr. Mopage?
Sure. Question directed to council. So the difference between the requirement and what's proposed here for the front setback is only 3.2 feet.
3.4.
Or 3.4.
Three feet, four, four inches.
Right. Same thing.
You might be right.
So, you know, looking at the plans, the garage looks like it's 24 feet deep. The average car is 14 to 15 feet long. Just wondering if there's any reason why the garage couldn't be shortened by that amount and then it would just comply?
Maybe Angelo Cipro could answer that if he's on.
Hi, this is Jessica Cipro. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So our architect actually told us that that was the standard for a garage to fit the vehicles of our size. I do drive an extended bed Yukon. And my husband also drives a diesel, like a, you know, a Chevy diesel truck. So, I mean, we're not trying to like store the boat in there or anything, but that was what Mark Baker, our architect, said would be standard for our garage. I mean, to fit our vehicles or to fit them both.
And I do recall from previous garage issues that 24 is pretty standard.
Questions? Mr. Mopage?
Uh, no, I guess that's my only question.
Okay. Ms. Lynch?
No, I want to thank Attorney Ricker for the presentation. It was very, very helpful and I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question actually for the Town Council. Send a memo regarding the 50% piece. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't know. I don't think I'd seen that. So I would just.
Yes. Ron, the, um, that was sent out today, literally Bernie Ed went, Bernie, the town planner, he went and got that notification from Stephen Madhouse about 4:00 PM today. So that's the reason why we were unable to send that out attached to the documents. But that was.
Okay.
I actually, I actually got it at the same time, but I did quote from that memo.
Okay. Yeah. Left my office about 4:00, which is why I would not have seen it. Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to be heard on this matter? Anyone going once? Anyone said anything to you?
Ron?
Do you wish to be heard on this?
What? I don't know what I did.
There being no further questions?
Mr. Rosen, can I just ask my client one question about the plot plan?
Yeah, sure.
Just to verify that the deck on the westerly side, Jessica, as I'm looking at the plot plan, is, am I right in saying that the dark line brings the, the deck along the side of the house in a little bit?
So the way that Kevin has it, it, it does look like that. We actually intend the deck to be smaller than the existing deck that, that exists now, which is, I believe, eight feet in length. We are eight feet out toward the lake. It's not going to be.
That would be, that'd be okay. What I'm concerned about is my comment to Ms. Cassette where I said that along the side of the house, on the westerly side of the house, that the deck was going to be brought in a little bit so that it's not as wide as the present deck on the side of the house.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thank you.
Okay. There being no further questions or comments?
Dad, hello, trying to get through. Are you hearing me?
Yeah. State your name, please.
Yeah. My name's Riveridge Coswell. I'm here with a friend of mine, Kay Lunt, that lives next door to the proposed project. And we just had some concerns and I'd like to at least run them by you. The first one is, you know, oh, you know, I understand what Mr. Ricker's saying about not really changing the neighborhood. I agree with him that South Quinzigman Ave is pretty much, like he said, till you get to Oak Street. And Oak Street, the character, after beyond that, the character really changes. So I, I really think this, you know, by putting a garage and sticking it way out by the street is really a, is a detriment to the existing neighborhood. The thing I had on the thing, my questions, I'll just run them through and then you can, you know, talk about them. The lot coverage of the impervious surface is, is, it's, it's a lot. It's probably, I mean.
Excuse me. They're not here for a lot coverage issue. The only thing we're deciding is the, the variance on the three feet garage and, and a special permit for the, which is not anything to do with the impervious area or with the lot coverage.
Okay.
That, that's not our issue.
Okay.
I can tell you, I can tell you though, that the lot coverage complies.
I do have another concern that I think is, I mean, that garage is going to be built on ledge. If any of you have been down by these houses, you've seen over the ledge, not only on these two houses, but it actually extends across the street and it's exposed on the other side. We presently have some water in our, in the cellar right now. My question is, and I did not hear anything that was spoken about what they're going to do with the runoff. This is, it, because it just can't run off the building and down onto the ledge because it's going to fall into the cellar. Unfortunately, I think both of these houses are adjacent to this particular house. I think they're pretty much built on stone or whatever foundations. And if you approve this, then, you know, I, and something happens with the water, I, I don't know what else to say. I guess everybody's been put on notice. I, it's just, it just is not going to work unless they've got a, a solid system to manage that water flow. And since it's in a watershed, I don't know how they're going to handle that. I would think that the board would be concerned a little bit about that, even though it may be not exactly on point with what they are requesting. It does affect it. The, the, the last thing that I, I wanted to throw in there too is the both foundations around this area are stone. As a matter of fact, part of the foundation in the house that I'm presently sitting in is built on that ledge. So if you go in there and have to, well, blast anything to get a foundation in for the garage, what type of dynamite are you going to allow them to use? Because it's basically going to affect the foundations.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to the runoff question, as the board knows, we will have to deal with Conservation Commission and there will have to be a filing with the Conservation Commission to deal with runoff. And the runoff from any proposed construction has to be less than the present. So that will have to be dealt with. And, and there are a number of ways engineers deal with runoff issues. And I'm sure Conservation Commission is, I know the Conservation Commission is very up to date on those techniques. So I would suggest respectfully that that's their bailiwick. We will have to go in front of them, no matter what happens here. And the bottom line is that I think runoff will be dealt with in the best engineering practices. And as I say, it's supposed to be dealt with in a better fashion than at present. With respect to the, the ledge, yes, we recognize that there is some ledge there. And there are different techniques that can be used with ledge. Some foundations, this is going to be a slab. If, if you allow this, the, the garage is going to be a slab, so there's not necessary to do a full foundation. But there needs to be footings and there needs to be a foundation. I understand that. I understand in some way, shape, or fashions, you can pin to the stone as well, the foundation. So there are ways to deal with it. I don't know that it's necessary. So, uh, there are ways to deal with it. Um, I don't know that it's necessary or gonna be necessary for them to blast there. Uh, this is just, we don't know.
If they don't, it's a possibility that you would have to blast.
I, well, I think that it's likely that, uh, a hammer would definitely be used.
Right.
To some extent, but, um, I would, I think the, the Cipros are hoping that that's the case as much as the neighbor would be.
And you wanna explain the, the process if there is blasting needed? So, whether there are concerns?
If you do need to blast, then, um, you need to deal with the fire department and the fire chief is, is the agent that is the, person who's in charge of, uh, allowing that. There are surveys done of the neighboring properties. And if the neighbors let the survey go forward, which they usually do, the surveyor takes a note of every aspect of that house, including the foundations, the walls, the ceilings, everything, and makes sure that, uh, they note, uh, everything that could possibly be affected. And, uh, if there's a problem, uh, there is a record, uh, with which these folks can rely on. Is, am I clear enough?
Either Ron is remarkably still, or we've lost him.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman. Your legal acumen has done.
He's remarkably.
Overwhelmed.
Well, I guess I will address to the abutter of the household. Does that answer your questions there, sir? Or is there any other additional questions?
So, so this is Patty. Um, so Ron is trying to rejoin. He's just having some difficulty, so he's aware that he's not, um, actively participating right now, so he's trying to rejoin. So, I don't know if we just wanna just, you know, patiently wait a few seconds that he may be joining now.
Awesome. Thanks, Patty.
Hello, uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. I'm, I don't, somehow this phone muted itself while I was listening to what you said earlier. But anyway, if you look on the Bing Maps, uh, on the aerial, you'll notice that the right hand, on the left-hand corner of the, uh, proposed where the garage is gonna go, that foundation, the, the foundation will be embedded in the ledge. You can see the ledge from the aerial on Bing Maps. So, to say that there probably won't be any ledge, I, I don't, I don't get that part. I, I'm not sure how they're attaching the garage to the house, um, without going through that, at least that part that's exposed there. I can tell you that going across both those lawns in the front where they're proposing the work, there is a ledge, and it's only down about a foot or two. You know, if they had dug a tuss pit, they'd see it. So, and I still got the concern, uh, ultimately, it sounds like we'll go to the Conservation Commission and talk about the water hearing, uh, to see what they're gonna do about that, because I don't know how they can redirect it away from our side of, uh, that side of the lot over to the other side into it, I don't know, unless they dig up the driveway and maybe put a retention area in the middle of the driveway somewhere to ca- capture that water. I'm not sure how they're gonna do it, cause you can't dump that down into the lake. That's against, you know, uh, the whole reason why you have the lake front and protecting all waters on the lake. So, it's, there's a lot of gray in here. I'd sure like a lot of clarification before we feel comfortable. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Um, so this is Patty Sheehan, uh, building inspector, so I just wanted to jump in here, and I can answer some of your questions for you. However, I do wanna let you know that Ron Rosen says he does not have the internet available to him. So, in this case, I'm wondering if Mary Beth would be able to continue on, um, with the, uh, meeting until he can return? Would that be okay with you, Mary Beth?
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you. So, just to address some of the concerns that, um, the caller, uh, the abutter brought up, is that the zoning board is here to address the location of the structures relative to the zoning bylaw, but other things that you are bringing up are related to the Conservation Commission, the engineering department, and the building inspector at the time of the building permit. So, we do deal with ledge and attachment, um, and attachment issues for the foundation all the time. There is a method in the building code for doing that, and it would be reviewed very carefully at the time the building permit is submitted. Prior to the building permit actually being issued, though, the Conservation Commission is also going to have to weigh in. Order conditions will have to be filed, and you will have to pay attention to that as well. So, this review that will take place, and you will, as an abutter, get notified of the Conservation Commission process. So, I don't know that all of your questions could be answered this evening, but I could tell you there's additional review that will take place. So, so I guess with that, um, Ms. Lynch, if you think that it's ready to have some more questions or ready to move on, do you vote?
Is Ron able to call in?
So, I know that he's trying, um, because he knows the different ways of getting access in, but he's texting me to let me know he, you know, he can't right now get in to the meeting.
Okay, I guess I'll jump in here. Uh, give me one second. I am getting a text from Ron as well. He's saying he can hear us. Here we go. Ron, are you here? Patty, um, do you see Ron's name on?
I see Ron's name on the participation list.
Yeah.
I can't unmute him, though.
Yeah, I know. I'm in same trouble.
Is it star six?
Ron, can you try star six to unmute? I can't. Okay. Okay. Sorry for the technical difficulties, everyone.
If I could suggest, Mary Beth, potentially maybe proceeding to the next hearing and then waiting until Ron is back on this one, and then after the subsequent case, we can move on with this, since we had five members hearing this case, and then that way, Matt Armenti is on this call, and you can, oh, there's Ron, never mind.
So, I, yeah, so I think I got this working on my phone. Um, but I do not have, for whatever reason, I, I do not have access to the computer. Last where I was, before I lost contact, it was when Richard was talking about procedures for blasting. And, uh, since then, there were additional questions asked, uh, which, um, at, uh, Ms. Sheehan answered for the caller. Okay, uh, are there any other questions? Does the caller have any other questions, concerns? It has not been answered. Okay. Uh, does anyone, anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, um, sidebar question, is Matt Armenti here?
Yes, he's here, Ron.
And did he, Matt, did you listen to the entire hearing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so I am not gonna vote on this one, and you will.
Okay.
Okay, cause I missed a, a good portion of the minute. I wanna have a vote, and since you listened to the whole thing, uh, I think it's appropriate for you to vote. So, I'm, so can I get a motion for variance and special permit from someone?
Is there any discussion first among board members?
Go right ahead. Yeah, go ahead, if anyone has any.
So, uh, I don't have any further questions. I, I am leaning towards approving. I believe there is a hardship with the topography and the lay of the land, so I'm just putting that out there if anyone else has
Okay.
another opinion.
Does anybody else have any discussion, anyone on the board? Anything to discuss? Uh, Mr. George? Uh, Mr. Mulcahy?
Yeah, I'd just say, um, I think I was the only one that had a, a question that might seem skeptical. I think where I land on this is that in the, it sort of cuts both ways, the fact that it's only three point two feet. It's more or less de minimis, I think. I don't think it, uh, goes against the spirit of the bylaw, and I wouldn't tell someone that they have to build a garage that won't fit their cars in it. So, I think it's reasonable to grant it.
Okay, and, um, Ms. Lynch, any questions?
No, thanks, Ron. I have no questions. Thank you.
And, Mr. Armenti, do you have anything to discuss on this issue?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so can I then get a motion in a second from, a motion first for special permit and variance, if possible?
Move to approve special permit and variance?
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call and vote, Mr. George? Mr. George? Did we lose Mr. George?
Here's it, um, he is no longer with us.
Okay. And my, actually, my other internet is back, so I may relocate in a minute.
Hang on, he's here, Ron. Give me a sec.
Okay.
He's on mute.
Oh.
How long has he been gone, though?
I have no, uh, questions, and I approve the variance and special permit.
Okay, um, Ms. Cassette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
And Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
So, motions for special permit and variance passes unanimously. Thank you. I'm gonna see if I can read one.
Ron, do you need me to hop on this?
Sounded like he got beamed up.
I, yeah, he's still here, but there he goes.
Okay, I'm on the app.
Great.
Uh, next six-thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of Waldenmiller G. Rahayo, four-thirty-three Union Ave, Framingham, MS., for a special permit to the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under section six, table one, to sell vehicles and for variance in the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under section seven, table two, to allow the display inventory.
Ron, hey, Ron. Uh, I have on my agenda that we have eleven morning side drive as a continuance from the last meeting.
What the heck am I listening at? I'm sorry, you're right. My apologies. Yeah, I, I moved on to the new hearings. Uh, continuing, continue twenty-nine, eleven morning side drive, where did it say, John and Catherine Hill, variance, section seven, table two, construct an in-ground pool closer to the twenty feet from the side yard setback. Are the hills here?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, uh, just to decide before we start, uh, I did sign a mull-in letter. I, I watched the tape from the last meeting for both this hearing and for the prior hearing. Uh, so, please continue, um.
Yeah, so as continuation from the last meeting, we were requested a couple of things. One, proof hardship, two, provide an updated site plan. So, um, a couple of things. One, we have the updated site plan. You can see in your, uh, files that were sent to you probably earlier this afternoon. We have, uh, letters of support from all the abutters. We have pictures of the, uh, lot in back of us, and then we put a response in a PDF to you that outlines the financial hardships, but quickly I'll go over them. Um, in that we technically don't have a backyard per the town rule of having a corner lot. So, there's two topography-related issues. First is that there's a stone wall that runs between our house and the back neighbor, and that if you were to excavate it, the slope would be anywhere from three to ten feet. Um, and then the slope from the middle of the yard down to Knight's Road goes from probably five feet down to the sidewalk. So, the backyard portion towards the, a part of our yard is more level and would be in conformance with the front yard setback on a corner lot, according to your, you know, your bylaw of section seven, um, dash C. So, we've got those as the topography-related issues, and then, you know, the fact that we've got existing screening in place, um, and then also would require us to move, uh, an existing patio and fire pit, in order to be in conformance is one of the other things that we wanted to bring up. And then later, lastly, bringing the pool closer to the house is a, is a safety issue with the number of kids that go in and out of this house on any given day. So, hopefully all that documentation you have and have been able to review, but it was what was asked of us from the last meeting.
Okay, uh, questions from the board, uh, Mr. George? Mr. George, any question?
Yeah, I went to look at the property, and he does have a, uh, topography, uh, problem there with the slopes, and, uh, I think that is his hardship for putting the pool in the place that it's at.
Sure, I can definitely pull that up for you, George. Can we see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So, yes, the applicant has provided the pool, which is located here where my cursor is. It is twenty feet from Knight's Road, which is conforming, and is twelve feet from the side yard, or in their case, rear yard of their property, but is the side yard, and it is non-conforming. That is, uh, reason for their variance.
Okay. Uh, is there just any questions?
Uh, to the, to the appellant's point that, uh, this would be within the setbacks if it weren't a corner lot, can you please, uh, I just tell us, confirm to us what the setback would be if it weren't a corner lot?
So, if the setback weren't a corner lot, it would be, if it's a five hundred square feet or larger pool, it would have to conform with the front and side yard of the property, but it needs to be twenty feet minimum away from the rear yard in all cases. But this is a corner lot, so therefore it just needs to be twenty feet away from the side yard setbacks.
No rear yards. Uh, Mr. Mulcahy, any questions?
Um, yeah, I think, could you explain to me the topography reason why it couldn't go just to the west enough to be inside the building envelope? I, I understand that it slopes up in the back and slopes down towards Knight's Road. Is there a reason it can't go to the west closer to the house?
Well, that's where we've got the existing patio and fire pit already in place. So, if we were to do that, it requires us to, one, remove it, and two, put additional. So if we were to do that, it requires us to, one, remove it, and two, put additional stonework patio on the backside of the yard, which is closest to the stone wall, which is going to, you know, interfere with that screening that we've already got in place.
So I think the trick with that is that the existing, I don't think existing patio would sort of qualify as something relating to the soil, shape of the lot, or the topography of the land. And that's what's required for a hardship. It sounds like it's not, there's not a slope in that direction, or some other kind of topographical feature that would prevent you from doing that. It's really just the patio and your fire pit.
And then moving it closer to the house, which, as I mentioned in the last part of this, you know, would raise a safety issue.
Right, but that, again, so in terms of soil, topography, and shape, I don't know if we're allowed to take safety stuff. And how close would it be if we were to move it, if you were to move it there to the house? That would be a safety issue.
I believe the pool would be 12 feet from the back steps of the house.
Which I do remind the board, it does have to be 10 feet or more feet away from the main principal building or the main house.
So it would comply with that requirement if you were to move it in that direction?
By two feet, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's there. Just one other question, Mr. Chair. Is there a certified plot plan that shows the location of the patio or the fire pit? And also, is this a certified plot plan? I don't see the stamp that's usually on it.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah, I don't know if it was stamped. I'd have to follow on, but, you know, when we were instructed to get a plot plan of the house lot, we did. We submitted with the pool, with the, with the pool as outlined by the number of different pool companies that came in. After that last meeting, I was, I was sent a letter by the original engineer telling me that I was in violation of my, of the plot plan itself, and that he wanted us to withdraw his plans from this application. And then quickly followed on that it's usually $1,000 for him to do another plot plan. So, that being said, we went to a different alternative, and, but again, we, we did what we were told in terms of the application for the original pool.
I would just like to point out to you, Peter, that this is an ongoing issue that we have had with JM Grenier Associates. They, for some reason, do not stamp their site plans, but, or their plot plans, but it is in every way an official certified plot plan.
Okay, and we don't, we don't have one with the patio or the fire pit?
Uh, not on this one. I could pull up another one that shows that the patio is there, but it is not on this current.
For the record, he asked that to be withdrawn for, for whatever reasons mentioned previously.
This is the one submitted with the original application?
Mr. Chairman, I also had another question before Mr. Mulcahy started, so. And looking at, and looking at the plot plan, if we could have that brought up so everybody can see, the, the one that was just submitted. So I had a question. Mr. Mulcahy makes a, a good point where, where we are, oh, can't talk. We are in need of a hardship that has to do with topography, soil, and whatnot. So if you were to orient the pool, as we see it there, 15 to 30 degrees, turning, you know, to the right, to fit within the side yard setbacks, could you just explain what would really need to be done in terms of the stone wall and the patio that you've described in your letter?
So we'll move the pool to your suggestion. We'll rip up the patio, rip up the fire pit, and then on the, on the backside of that where the stone wall is existing now, we will put, or be required to put either a potential retaining wall and/or additional concrete work to make up for the, the amount that we would lose by moving it closer to the house.
So when I say closer, I'm, I'm really saying you turn it 15 to 30 degrees so it fits within that corner of your property somewhat better? And I don't understand why the entire patio would have to be removed, and that couldn't just be considered the decking around the pool. That's what we're kind of struggling with.
Yeah, turning it 50 to 30 degrees, I don't know if that makes us conforming or not. And if, if you do do that, you know, does the, the bottom right side of that go into the, you know, the 20 foot on Knight's Road, and then still have an issue with the 12 foot setback on the back wall?
Uh, or 10 feet from the, oh, sorry, I'm now looking at your house, and reorienting the pool would possibly infringe on the 10 feet from the dwelling requirement. But I can't tell with plot plan as drawn, without the patio and some, uh, some distance from that home to the pool edge. It's difficult. So let me, and I'll just make one final comment. We've had pools come before us before, and we've denied them. They've had to remove their decking or patios. So it has happened before. I, in fact, came before the board years ago, and I had to remove a deck for the same reason, and I understand your concern. Safety was also an issue, and I had to install a alarm on the door leading out to the pool for the same reason. So I understand where you're coming from.
Uh, Ms. Lynch?
Um, I do see topography as a concern or a legitimate reason for approving this. I did go and look at the property, and they'd have to move that pool very close to the house. That would be a big concern to me. I also want to just comment, there are letters that we've received from abutters, which were very helpful in understanding how the neighbors felt about this, and I appreciate that. So those are my comments.
Is there anyone in attendance that wishes to be heard on this matter? I just, has anyone mentioned to you that they wanted to be heard? You're muted, I just.
I have not heard anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Can we hear, sorry, I have one more. Can we hear from the appellant, the letter, the abutters? Could we just confirm which abutters they are? Are they directly, about, direct abutters?
Yes.
Okay.
One is from 11, uh, no, one is from a morning side, which I presume is next to 11 to some degree.
Yep.
Support, and the other one is from a nine morning side, which I would think is on the other side.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone on the board have any other questions, comments, statements?
Mr. Chairman, I have just one question. We usually have, ask for a certified plot plan, but locations and everything that's on the lot, just to give us a clearer picture of where everything stands. To me, right now, I went and looked at the property, and I think I see topography as a problem, but I think other board members have a problem of visualizing where everything is on the lot. I don't know what your suggestion would be, you know, in regards to that.
Uh, I'll go back to the two members that have the concerns, Mr. Mulcahy and Ms. Cassette.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I can pull up the, the original plot plan. I can pull up the original plot plan that was submitted for last month's hearing, which is not up to date, and it is not to the exact dimensioning and code and such, but it'll at least show where the patio is located.
Okay.
And the new plan for the record is referenced from the recorded registry plan.
So this currently is what was taken from 2012. This is where their patio is. There now is actually a fire pit that is located where my cursor is here, and the pool is then over this way. So the pool to the fire pit, as I've talked with the applicants that are before you, they have stated that the fire pit is a distance of 10 feet away from the pool. Of course, there's nothing that is on determination of that from either plot plan, but that is where the location of the fire pit is supposedly.
Okay, a question for, I guess, would, would a certified plot plan have, I know it would have the deck, but would it have the, or the patio, but would it have a fire pit on it?
The certified plot plan would have a patio. It does not necessarily need the fire pit.
Okay. So again, I go back to Mr. Mulcahy and Ms. Cassette. You know, I'll, I'll roll back to you. What do you guys want?
So I, so I'll just say, when I'm looking at both the old plan and the new plan, and I'm, and I too have gone by the property, but I'm also looking air, at an aerial shot of the property. I am struggling with, I, I do not understand why the pool can't be oriented and keep the patio. So it's all in one area. I'm, I'm struggling. I don't, I haven't heard enough or seen enough to show me that it can't be done.
Yeah, I think, for me, the, you know, regardless, the patio I don't think is, qualifies as a hardship under the statute. And so I think I totally understand not wanting to dig up your patio. I get it. It's extra expense. It's extra hassle. But, you know, we have a statute that tells us things that we're allowed to consider to grant variances, and it has to be something about the topography of the land, the conditions of the soil, or the shape of the lot, and none of those seem to be in play here. So that's, so based on what I've seen so far, anyway, I think that would, that would put my vote at a no.
So I guess the question is, do we go to a vote, or do you want to see more of the detail on the plot plan? Yeah, I, I would also go back and say, the, you know, again, safety can be a consideration. There are, there are other issues that could be used in consideration in addition to state size topography. That, safety would be one of them. That's, things like that. So I, I just go back to, if you're telling me that no matter what, you're voting no on this, then I don't want to put extra expense to the applicants.
Sure.
So I would know if that's something that would sway either one of you.
Um, it would. I, I've, I've had the case my, personally, where I've had to, again, install an alarm on the door because the pool was close to the house. But what I'm struggling with is I, it seems feasible to me for them to have that pool and the size they want and orient it and not have to remove their patio. That's what I am struggling with. Now, as far as safety, if they were to do that, you know, what would the fencing? How would the fencing work out so that they wouldn't have to put an alarm on their, the door leading from their home? But that's the answer to that. That's, you're required then to put an alarm on the door, or you need to have a locked fence to the pool. So if you could elaborate a little bit more and convince me that the, the patio would definitely need to be removed, that would help me. Without the plot plan showing that and the distances, I'm having a tough time. I'm sorry.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah, no, I've got nothing more to say to this.
So this, Mr. Rosen, might I jump in to give a few comments about the excavation required for in-ground pool?
Sure, sure.
So when this building permit would come to the building inspector for, for review, the way that they excavate for in-ground pool, as you know, it's overexcavated quite a bit. So a lot of the yard would get disturbed, so it may not, and it's very unlikely that an existing patio would be able to be saved and be reused, because sometimes the grading around it has to change. Also, fencing and door alarms do have to comply with building code, and we would have to review that according to the building code based on what barriers the owner wants to install. So generally, people do like to keep the pools away from the house because they don't like cars to lead directly into the pool area, depending on, you know, family configuration is. So certainly, more of this would be reviewed under, under a building permit. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, it does, because it also makes it, even though it can technically fit within the envelope, all of a sudden, you're coming up with a size issue based on what, what the building inspector is saying. So, okay. Any other discussion? Anybody? Mr. George, Ms. Mulcahy, Ms. Cassette, Ms. Lynch, anybody? Okay. Okay, there being no further comments or questions, we'll take it under advisement. You'll be notified of our decision. Let's go to, can I get a motion, Mr. George?
Motion to approve.
And can I get a second? Ms. Lynch?
Second.
Let's discuss. Discuss, Ms. Cassette and Mr. Mulcahy.
So I'm, I now have been swayed on the safety issue, and that is why I would lean towards approval, not any of the hardships that were presented.
Okay. I still think there was a topic. Mr. Mulcahy?
Um, I'm still a no based on what I've seen in terms of, I just don't think there's anything a sort of recognizable hardship, but it sounds like Ms. Cassette is in favor, so I think they're all set.
Okay. Mr. George?
Yes, to approval.
Ms. Cassette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes four to one.
Thank you.
Okay, next is to hear the appeal of, and again, I never get this name right, Waldemar G. Roheo, 433 Union Ave, Framingham, MS, for a special permit for the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section 6 table 1, to sell vehicles and for variance in the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section 7 table 2, to allow display inventory and storage of vehicles in the 15-foot front yard and side yard upon property located at 47 Hartford Turnpike in the Limited Business District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 57, slot 049000. Is the applicant here?
Hello, yes, I'm the owner of the property. My name is Sparrow Gianopolis. I'm the owner of 47 Hartford Turnpike. And through the chair, I'd like to address the board regarding our application today for a variance. We, this is basically a change of name. The business, the auto lot has been there. Even, we only go back to 84, I think, the town for records, but it was that even way before that. And we just wanted to change the name, and then, you know, we ran across the fact that we needed a variance. So we did get an engineering layout of the property depicting the buildings and so on. And the variance that we're looking for is the fact that the setbacks for, on, 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 on either side, on the Hartford Turnpike site and on the Edgway Boulevard site are not possible because there's, there's only one entrance, and that's from Hartford Turnpike. And then the, the back, there isn't enough room in order to have those cars back. Fortunately, though, the Hartford Turnpike has a, a brim in the front there, a grassy, an old brim that's, I don't know, about 10 feet or so, that provides a nice barrier there for the front. And again, this has been an existing parking lot. I mean, not a parking lot, a car lot and a garage dating back to whenever. And, you know, we, we got through the selectmen, they approved it. And then for some reason, it didn't, it didn't have the plan. And, and we submitted those plans that you should have in front of you. And hopefully you guys see in favor of us getting approval for this.
Okay, thank you. Patty, can I ask you a quick question? Are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
So this is an existing business that's been operating and everything is exactly the same?
Right. So the way, the reason why they're coming is because it's a new business owner. However, a- as you know, with a lot of car lots, we've reviewed the, we're trying to get the applicants to comply with the rules and regulations for the minimum requirements on the plot plans. And also for the setback requirements for the display area for vehicles. So they actually, with Bernie Cahill, Town Planner, working with the applicant, they actually did a very good job submitting a good plot plan and one that is, you know, in compliance with the way that the special permit would allow.
Okay, so, so even though the business was existing, was it operating without the variance prior?
So it was operating, yes.
Okay, I'm good. Why, Mr. George, any questions?
Not at this time.
Ms. Cassette?
None for me.
Mr. Mopagey?
Just a quick one. There was a plot plan submitted with this and there's one that's existing and one that's proposed. And the proposed one shows a five-foot buffer within that 15-foot required buffer. Is that the proposal or is that, is this just illustrative?
That is the proposal, Peter.
Okay.
Any other questions here? Okay, Ms. Lynch?
I have no questions.
Okay, if there's anyone in attendance who should be heard on this? Hey, there being no further questions or comments?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yeah. Kenny P., Edgemia Boulevard.
Yeah.
What I don't understand is you want to take away some of the grass area on Hartford Turnpike and push the cars closer to Route 20. Is that right?
No, definitely not. No, we're not doing any of that. No.
What's, what's the, what's the move here?
It's basically a house cleaning issue. They've been operating the way it has been for since 19, at least 1984. And, and they're going through the various process to bring themselves in compliance with the bylaw. From what I understand, the operation will be exactly as it was tomorrow as it is yesterday.
That's correct.
All right.
That's correct.
And we'll, we'll have no additional asphalt. In other words, the grass isn't going to be taken out. You're not going to put more.
No, we, we, oh, not at all.
Okay, the, and the same thing, that's fine. I, I, I'll, I'll go with that. The only thing I'd like to see you do is clean up your act. And by doing so.
We're, we're under new ownership.
Hear me out, hear me out, hear me out. I live here. I'm here, I'm here 24/7. And it, it's, it's a mess down there. It really is. I mean, you just cut the grass yesterday for the first time, I think, this year. But we'd like to see a little bit of organization here. You know, you've got motors all over the place and cars taking apart everywhere. I don't know if you're in compliance with all the ordinances or not, but I would love to see you clean up your act a little bit.
One more, can I just get your name so that we can have the minutes correct?
Kenny Picaro, Edgemia Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I guess that was kind of what I was trying to get at is the, the proposed plan shows this five-foot vegetative buffer added that's not currently there. Is that going to be done? If we approve this or no? Because currently it, it looks like it goes right up to the street on Edgemia Boulevard. The pavement, I mean.
If I may.
Yes, that, that's been the existing, I'm sorry, through the chair. That, that's been the existing situation there all along. And, 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 and the plan also shows the existing situation there. You cannot get behind there and be able to turn around if you were to try to push those cars back. That's, that's why we're here for a variance because of the hardship that, that we're faced with here. If, if, if we could, we would, we would, you know, give all the buffers that you requested, but unfortunately.
Forgive me if I'm being really dense. There's a plan that was submitted and one shows no buffer between the street, between Edgemia Boulevard and pavement. And the other one says proposed and says there's a five-foot vegetative buffer on Edgemia Boulevard. If we approve this, you will be required to add that vegetative buffer or you will do it or no? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Which, which, where's the second?
Yeah, could we please have the plot plan brought up?
Sure, let me present that.
I believe the second page showing the proposed is just what the appellant would have to do. And it's basically proving that it, it won't work.
Okay, so when it says proposed, it's to prove that it can't happen.
So what it is, Peter, just to clarify for everyone on the board, is currently, is currently there is a zero-foot buffer. So basically there's this little edge of curb right here that's asphalt curb that is zero feet away from Edgemia Boulevard. The applicant for the dotted line requires 15 feet of buffer line up to here. That is what is required. They are proposing to go five feet of buffer and to put in three trees on these locations here as noted on the plot plan to accommodate for the extra vegetation on that portion.
Okay, so it's not just a name change. They would be required to do that also.
Yes, that is, we, we also have noted for the planning department that that is to be placed there.
Okay.
Okay, so, so it's actually less detrimental under the new ownership.
That is correct.
The vegetation, okay. That, that, that was not clear to me initially. I, I just thought yesterday and tomorrow would be the same. Okay, but that is not the case. Any other discussion? From the board? Okay, can I get a motion, Mr. George?
Motion to approve with changes.
With the proposed, yeah. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, before we vote, any discussion, further discussion at all? Okay, Mr. George?
Aye for approval.
Ms. Cassette?
Aye.
Mr. Mopagey?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Motion passes unanimous. Next is to hear the appeal. So did we, we already continued this one, correct? Yeah. Yes or no? I thought we continued.
Yes, we, we continued in 27 general half, that was correct, German. Moving ahead to Lexington.
Here to appeal of L. Brian Tresser, 11 Lexington Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a variance to the town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw under section seven dash C and section seven, table two, to construct a carport, carport less than 20 feet from the side lot line upon property located at 11 Lexington Road and the residence of the district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury assessment tax plate 26, slot 110047. Okay, I, I. Go ahead, go ahead. Mr. Tresser?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm here. I didn't quite hear the.
Yeah, tell us, please, if you know anything.
Basically what I'm asking to do, there is a carport sitting almost in the same location. The, the, it's been there for years. But I cannot meet the 20-foot restriction from the side property and place a structure. Structure there. I just don't have enough room between the property line and the house. And the structure that I want to put up in place of the one that's there, on the sidewall, it will be in the same location. It's not going to move any closer to the property line, which is right at three, 3.2 feet. And it will extend toward my house another four feet. The front and back setbacks are, well, are within the, within the code.
So what's there?
There's a carport there now that measures roughly 12 by 22. And this one's, I, I would like to put one that is 16 feet wide and 24 foot deep. But the sidewall will be in the same position.
Okay.
Can we put a, put a map?
Presenting that right now to you guys? Can we see this? Nope.
Okay.
So the current plot plan currently shows that the carport is right here, 3.2 feet away from the side yard property.
Mr. Tresser?
I'm sorry, Mr. Rosen, you're breaking up. What, what was your question?
Could you leave?
Oh, certainly.
Okay, go ahead, Idis.
So it is 3.2 feet away from the side yard property line currently. The reason why there is a variance request for this one is that originally when the carport was put in according to the applicant back in 2004, that there was no building permit established. So therefore, this is a brand-new variance for an existing carport that is non-conforming, but it has never been approved by the building permit. So therefore it is a brand-new variance. So that's the reason why it's a variance, not a special permit.
Mike, if it was in there since 2004, wouldn't it be grandfathered? For 10 years?
So I, I just, I could, I could help if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great.
So I don't think I just has had that experience yet about the, you know, applying the six-year and 10-year rule to a structure. So yes, if this was in place for 10 or more years without a permit, it would be grandfathered and we would put it under the special permit situation. However, I, not having that information going to our own GIS system and kind of looking from 2005 to 2009, 2005 on our GIS system, it does not show that structure there. And 2009, I do believe that I see it there. So that may be, you know, 10 years. But we were looking to the applicant to provide some more documentation to, to tell that it's been there for 10-plus years and we didn't get that in with the application.
Yeah, so the only thing that I have is the receipt from the New England Carports that installed the carport, who put it up and at the time, I made, I guess, an assumption that if there were any permits needed, he would pull them. I do have the receipt for the original building from 2005.
Is that something?
Thought I submitted it, but if not, I can certainly submit it.
Okay.
Well, while we're on this topic, Mr. Chairman of, of things in the record, are these, who drew these plot plans?
I just, I didn't.
These were given to me by the applicant. He went and gave me a current plot plan and a proposed plot plan view. They are not certified plot plans and he has submitted a waiver request as such. The waiver request that basically states that if he were to go and get a certified plot plan just to showcase in a way for the existing carport and the proposed carport, it would cause the project to be delayed by a couple of weeks, if not a few months, and also add an additional expense for the hardship.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the, it's, to me, that's not a hardship, but my question is, if he has an invoice that would show that it was built before 2000, what year were we, 2010, would that not be sufficient as evidence that this should be a special permit and not a variance? In case I'm okay with things as they are. Did we have the, did we have the receipt on the file?
I do not.
Patty, have you seen that?
No, but what I would just suggest is that, you know, again, looking at our own town GIS maps, it's, there's a gray area for, meaning gray area, meaning it's not as clear and visible on our maps because really that's the best way to tell whether a structure is there or not, not necessarily by a receipt as when it was purchased. However, there's other applications such as Google Earth where it could be identified. So we were just looking for, that request was made to provide that, to provide some information as to how long the structure was there, but we, we didn't get that. If we, we do believe it's over 10 years, then you're right that this would be a special permit request. But we, we only have what we have in the, in the file folder right now.
So, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Jean, when you look at GIS, 2009, there's definitely some kind of structure. And, and that, you know, 2009 to 2020, we've met the 10-year. But are you saying that, that the GIS image wasn't submitted in the file? We can't consider it?
So it was not submitted in the file. However, we all have access to that right now. See what's there. However, I'm not exactly sure it is the same carport. So you do have to make some assumptions. I guess I'm looking at the same 2009 GIS map as you are. So it has to be me. Yeah.
And if you just, you know, move between 2009, 2013, 2015, when resolution was significantly improved, there's nothing there that would lead me to believe that's not the same structure. So I, I believe the 2009 image is sufficient, but, so to me, that satisfies the grandfathered that this is, should be grandfathered. I still have issue with not having a plot plan, but I'll leave that for someone else. So I believe the carport was installed sometime between 2005 and 2009 is what I'm saying.
Concur.
It also appears that Ron has left just as a note.
Okay.
I can jump in, although Ron's texting me right now. Can I get some guidance from Idis or Patty on procedurally?
Sure, I would just say that the process that you used in the previous one where Ron was in and out is that Matt has been hearing the entire hearing. So therefore he could step in and, and vote when you get to that step and you could carry on for additional comments and a motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any additional comments on the hearing?
I do have a question. So let's say we grandfather the carport itself and the appellant wishes to now replace it with a different structure that will line up exactly with the existing structure. with a different structure that will line up exactly with the uh, existing structure. Um. And let's just put aside the, okay, so that it wasn't permitted. So we can look back to the uh, when it was, we believe it was installed. It looks like we have sufficient evidence that it was ten years ago. So the, the need for that to be a legally permitted structure has passed. What the appellant would like to do now is put a new structure and not exceed the existing non-conformity. How can we, Patty, uh, uh, Miss Jean, how can we enforce that? That structure will not go past that without evidence of a plot plan that shows all of that to us? How do we enforce that?
So you have, the board has requested um, that a certified plot plan be submitted with the building permit application. However, that doesn't um, achieve the applicant's request for not having to go through that cost. For this process. So you may consider a waiver for this process. However, when the applicant gets to the building permit process, that can't be bypassed. A certified plot.
Okay.
And it is going to be required with the building permit.
Thank you.
Wanted to advise that applicant did ask for a variance, even though we could put in the minutes in the decision. Everything that you're summarizing right now, finding that it could have been, may have been able to be a special permit request. We can put that in the discussion, but it does have to be voted on as a variance because that is what is requested. Yeah.
Okay. So. Mr. Cheshire. I'm not sure if you followed that. You could stay muted, sorry. Cause we have feedback. Um. So if we were to agree to waive the need for a plot plan in our decision, you would still need to go ahead and have that plot plan done. So you would still have the expense, but what you wouldn't have is the holdup on the time, let's say. You could be getting that plot plan done while you proceed. Is what I'm hearing. So go ahead and unmute. You want to comment?
Uh, it's not going to delay the um, you don't have to have the certified plot plan to go forward? Is that what I'm understanding?
In this decision, but you would, you would need a certified plot plan to actually go ahead and get the building permit approved and whatnot. Once you, you get started. You would still need to go ahead and do that. It helps us uh, the building inspector enforce where the placement of it is. And we need, we need that. Not for this decision, but going forward to do your actual structure. Did I explain that correctly, Patty?
Yeah, Patty.
Yes, go ahead.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so I've been following, but I've been back. I missed a little bit, but um. So, so discussion before, I believe we can go from a variance to a special permit. Because it's less detrimental, but we can't go from a special permit to a variance. I'm pretty sure we can move this as a, as a special permit. Which if, 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 if we do believe, if the board believes that it's been there for more than ten years, I believe we can do that. Um, and, and again, to let the applicant know, whether we waive the the certified plot plan, you're still going to need it for the building inspector uh, to get your final building permits.
So, so what you're saying about the building, um, about the plot plan, yes, I believe that the owner probably understands that, that that would be needed with the building permit application. Um, I do know that, you know, um. Usually we consider the variance, the higher request and needing more supporting information rather than the special permit. I'm just a little uncomfortable on actually changing the applicant's um, voting on the applicant's uh, application as a special permit rather than a variance because this actual patient isn't in the file. Um, so I, I guess.
We have done that, we have done that in the past.
Okay.
We, we've never gone from, you can't go from special permit to variance, but in the past, um, and, and I'm not, I'm talking recent past, within the last year or so, we have gone from uh, we have downgraded from variance to a special permit when, when it became apparent that that's all that was needed.
Yeah, because the standard is less stringent. It's like a lesser.
Uh, Mr. George, is that members, is that?
Yes. We have done it in the past.
Okay, okay. So I, I'm okay if everyone on the board is okay with hearing this is a special permit. If we believe that it's, building has been there for more than ten years, I think that's how we should go. Um, and, and I'm okay on a waiver for the certified plot plan in that case, where I wouldn't be if we were hearing it for a variance.
I agree.
Any discussion, Mr. Mulcahy, Mr. George?
Much easier as a special permit.
Yeah, um, Ms. Lynch?
No, and I do agree that we've gone from variances to special permits in the past, so I.
Yeah. Okay, so is there anyone in attendance? Is, is anyone on the board have any further questions?
No.
Now, now that we're doing this as a special permit. Um, is anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, so first thing I'd like to do is get a motion to waive the requirement for a certified plot. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the waiving of certified plot plan?
Can I get a second?
Second?
Um, roll call, Mr. George. Hi. Um, Ms. Cassette?
Hi.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Hi.
Ms. Lynch?
Hi.
And the chair also votes aye. So we have waived the requirement for the certified plot plan, but again, let me reiterate, that does not waive that requirement for the building inspector. Uh, next, uh, can I get a motion to on, on the special permit? Is there any other discussion that the board wants to have on this? I will.
No.
Okay, um, so can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve special permit for eleven Lexington Road.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second?
Okay, uh, Mr. George? Hi. Ms. Cassette?
Hi.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Hi.
Ms. Lynch?
Hi.
And the chair also votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. Um. Next is to hear the appeal of Karen and Scott Bloomfield, thirteen Atherton Road, Hudson, Mass. For a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section seven dash B to expand the deck and add a balcony upon property located at thirty-four Oakland Avenue in the rural B district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate nineteen, plot zero one nine zero zero zero. Is, are the Bloomfields here?
Yeah, Scott Bloomfield is here.
Okay. Um, tell us what you're doing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um. I'm uh, here requesting a special permit um, at thirty-four Oakland Ave to rebuild the balcony um, and to replace a deck. This was a older kind of neglected house that's I'm trying to fix up um, on the lake and thirty-four Oakland Ave. Um, and um, proposing to um, you know, change the deck dimensions slightly to um, be more conforming, um, more usable and a better fit for the limitations of the landscape. Um. The, the property is basically has a fifty foot wide lot bordering Lake Quinsigman, kind of over on the Worcester side. Um, it's, has a very steep bank and hill, almost like built into the hill. Um, and it's basically next to impossible to get any large machines or digging construction down there uh, because of the, the, the site work, for any site work that would need to be done. Um, so everything's kind of carried down and, you know, but, but having to dig something would be very difficult. Um, and the reason I bring this up is there's a abandoned cesspool that is um, had, has been permitted through the, the town to be abandoned and filled in uh, to prevent any um, waste from flowing into the lake. And this abandoned cesspool is located directly in the rear or the lakeside of the house. Um. So. What we're, we're proposing is um, um, keeping the existing balcony, the, the approximately three by seven, so rebuilding that the same dimension. So there's no uh, um, change to those dimensions. But basically uh, changing the existing deck that was approximately three feet by uh, three feet wide, by thirty-three feet long, um, requesting to rebuild the deck, changing the platform dimensions to approximately thirteen by twenty-three. And I've submitted um, plans that would, would show that. Uh, for safety reasons, the, the existing balcony was taken down and the second floor slider has been boarded up for now. Um, and except for a couple boat, posts, the existing deck has also been recently um, taken down as well. Um. And if you, in the um, files that I sent over, the plans that I sent over, there's a picture of the existing deck. You'll, you'll see what that looks like, what that, what that looked like. Pretty decrepit and, and falling apart, but basically the uh, um, re- rebuilding that and, and changing that slightly. And um, also included, you, as I mentioned, there's the, the plans that will show you exactly what the, the, the deck is, is gonna look like, uh, proposed to look like, if you, if you guys still see it. Um. But what I wanted to talk to you a little bit as well, why we're changing the deck dimensions as well. So first of all, it's, it's, it's gonna be more conforming um, for, on the other side, uh, the existing deck was only approximately nine feet away from the west sideline property line. And the reason I say approximately nine feet, the, the deck is, the house is slightly kidney cornered and though the, the width of the lot goes from fifty feet to fifty-one feet. So when you measure down, it could be, you know, slightly plus or minus uh, the nine feet. Um, and we're gonna change the deck, uh, proposing to change the new deck to approximately twenty-one feet from the uh, west side property line. Um, be no change to the right side and the, or the east side and the um, it would be ten feet closer to the um, to the, to the water, towards the water, but still having, I think, anywhere from twenty-one to twenty-four feet away from the water. Um, and I think it's important to note that only approximately, it'll be only approximately eighteen inches closer to the lake than the abandoned cesspool that's there. Um, so there's some pictures in there that I can hopefully show you as well. Um, so there's really no vegetation or anything there. It's really just basically covering up the abandoned cesspool uh, with the deck. Um. So that really gets into kind of the better fitment, the better fit with the landscape limitations. Um, because of where the cesspool is located, you, the, the footings would have to be dug past the eleven foot, seven inches of where the uh, the cesspool is. Um, some of the existing deck footings were actually located, I don't know if they put in after, were on a kind of a cesspool where it was. So they weren't structurally sound. So all footings would be moved off of the, the um, the, the cesspool and, and dug according to the code. Um, also, this makes it more usable. The, you know, versus not having a deck at all. The existing sliding doors that are, you know, possibly four feet above grade on the back of the house. And I'll show you the pictures of that as well. Hopefully if you can bring those up. Um, the proposed deck allows for the use of these egresses and makes the backyard more usable. Um, with no deck, obviously the, the sliders, uh, the egresses in the back would, and uh, would make it very difficult and obviously accessing the backyard would require use of additional stairs to kind of go around uh, over on the side. Uh, so it makes it more difficult to, for, you know, the children or, you know, my mother, who's more elderly, coming over and getting on the deck, right? So it really makes the deck, there is no backyard other than, than that. Um. So the other thing I, I'd like to kind of point out with this is all of the surrounding properties have non-conforming decks, balconies and/or sheds. And I've actually sent over to I to say the um, uh, a picture of kind of showing about all the properties, the, the nearby and showing just all the different, the decks and, and um, um, balconies and like a shed, the sheds that are the same as, you know, so it's not like it's, it's out of place. It'd just be having a deck and a balcony very similar to the other um, properties. Um, with the deck, excuse me, with the lot being only fifty feet wide, the thirty, the thirty foot setback is basically impossible to beat now, right? Because thirty feet one way and thirty feet the other way will work with negative ten feet. So, you know, I'm not complaining about the other decks and balconies of the day. I'm just saying it's a, it's just kind of how those lots are set up in, in, you know, the reality of, of what the neighborhood is like. Um, so with that, you know, thank you. And I was wondering if there's any questions or?
I'm sure there will be.
Okay.
Um. If I request, so this is a special, uh, I just, this is a special permit, correct?
Yes, this is a special permit.
And if I'm not mistaken, I can't access the Google folder right now again, because my internet's down. And if I go there, I'm gonna lose this connection. Um, I recall there's a, also a waiver request for a certified plot plan?
Uh, no, I was able to send that over today.
Oh, okay.
It was from Jarvis. He had sent me a, a non-certified, but I was able to talk to Kevin today and he's was able to uh, to get it over to me. So you should have that.
Okay. Um. Okay, uh, questions down the line, uh, Mr. George?
Non at this time.
Ms. Cassette?
I just have a comment. Uh, I wish we could give out an award to those appellants who put in applications. Uh, you did an excellent job. Uh, it's the best application I've seen by far um, in terms of explaining your hardship and uh, you provided everything I needed to answer any questions I might have. So, uh, well done.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, regarding hardships, he had me at cesspool. Um. Uh, Mr. Mulcahy?
I'd second uh, Ms. Cassette's comment and no questions.
Okay, Ms. Lynch?
And I would third, um, Lisa's comments. I was actually gonna say the exact same thing. And I was gonna comment that the photo in particular is really helpful, especially since we can't get behind um, your house. Um, so that was really helpful and I appreciate that and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, is there anybody in attendance that wishes to be heard on this? Okay, there being no further questions or comments, we'll take it under advisement and vote right now. Uh, any discussion, board? I didn't think so. Okay, uh, can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve.
That would be a second as well. Okay, um, Mr. George?
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Cassette?
Hi.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Hi.
Ms. Lynch?
Hi.
And the chair also votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, our next six thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of Nicholas uh, Dempsey, trustee of Nicholas A. Dempsey, two thousand and fifteen trust sixteen Winslow Street, Shrewsbury, Mass for a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section four dash B to remove and replace a non-conforming rear deck upon property located at sixteen Winslow Street in a residence B one district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty, plot zero six one one seven six. Uh, is the applicant here, Mr. Dempsey?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Todd Broder here on behalf of the appellant.
Okay, um, I'll turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Uh, I'm an attorney with Fletcher Tilton, uh, three seventy Main Street, Worcester, Mass, also a resident of Shrewsbury, eighteen Rice Street. Uh, to describe the project a little bit, uh, Mr. Dempsey purchased the home in two thousand and two, has been living there since that time. Uh, in two thousand and four, there was a rear deck constructed, which is the subject of this application uh, which impinges on the rear yard setback. It's thirty feet, nine inches, I believe, off the, off the, off the uh, excuse me, off the, excuse me, at the closest, for the rear property line. Uh, the genesis of the, of the project is that uh, Tricia is the uh, resident in the home and has MS and has a mobility issues. So this is going to be a handicap accessible home once done, including an elevator, uh, accessible kitchen areas and bathrooms and, and the like. So there, there's a reconfiguration of the home happening here. Uh, but the rear deck is important because uh, Tricia spends a lot of time on the rear deck. Uh, and, and it's not, it, it's going to be inaccessible to her in the very near future as her mobility issues increase. So the 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 reason for the reconstruction of this deck on essentially the same footprint, it changes a little bit towards the house. But it's kind of inconsequential, it's outside of the setback. But the reason for the reconstruction is to lift up the deck so that it meets the threshold for the for the back door, so that there's an easy entry and exit from from that back door out to the deck and then back inside. So it's it's really lifting that deck up and the threshold so that it's it's accessible for Tricia to to utilize that that rear porch.
Setbacks are the same?
Yes.
Okay. For me, it's a slam dunk. It's special permit, remove and replace. I have no questions, Mr. George?
I would just like to comment real quick.
Sure. Yep.
While they are going and replacing the deck and as Todd had mentioned, there is an addition being added to the single-family dwelling that I just want to make clear for the record that that addition is being put on at the same time as the replacement for the deck. And it is going to be less than fifty percent of the existing floor area, but that is not determination required for the special permit in regard to the deck.
Okay, yeah, that's not here for that reason. Ms. Cassette?
I have nothing, no questions.
Mulcahy?
Just to clarify a question, the who built the pre-existing non-conforming deck?
Mr. Dempsey hired a contractor in in two thousand and four and it was done through a contractor.
Okay, and was there a variance or a special permit for that?
Back, back in two thousand and four, a deck was not considered structures and they were never needed. They didn't need to come before us back then.
I see, so it's effectively grandfathered?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Lynch?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve, remove and replace non-conforming red deck?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. George?
Hi.
Ms. Cassette?
Hi.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Hi.
Ms. Lynch?
Hi.
And the chair also votes aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Our next six-thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of Whitney Street Home Builders LLC, one Golden Court, Westboro, Mass. For an administrative appeal to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section seven dash F three D and section nine dash D for persons aggrieved by the action of the planning board upon property located at two five seven Main Street in the multifamily two and Residence B one districts. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate twenty, plot zero three six zero zero zero, Ms. Lynch? One second, Ms. Lynch?
Yes, request to recuse myself from the hearing, please.
Okay, and Mr. Armenti, are you here?
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Lynch has a conflict of interest, Mr. Armenti, you're sitting in. The applicant, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Alex Para, I'm an attorney, I represent Whitney Street Home Builders. I I'm not familiar with this particular technology, I don't see myself, am I on the screen?
You are on the screen, we can see you, yep.
Thank you very much. I guess as a preliminary matter, what the manager of Whitney Street Home Builders is Stephen Benincasa. And we would ask that Mr. George recuse himself from this matter. I see that since we've lost Ms. Lynch, that would also require us to request a continuance of this matter. Just very quickly and procedurally, it's a little bit of a complicated matter in as much as the application involved both special permits and site plan approval. The special permits were appealed to the land court and there is a status conference pending on August twenty-eighth, so perhaps it would be best if we continued the matter to after August twenty-eighth.
Our next meeting would be August thirty-first.
It is actually August twenty-fourth, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had the wrong date in my calendar. So then the meeting after that would be September twenty.
September twentieth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay.
The applicant, we'd ask at that time that two associate members be available.
Yep, and the only other issue would be, I believe you're going to be outside the window, so you would need to extend the statute.
Yes, that's fine.
On the on the period. So the paperwork for that will be forwarded. Can I get a motion to continue to September twenty-eighth at six-thirty P M?
Move to continue to September twenty-eighth at six-thirty P M?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Cassette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Mr. Armenti?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. Motion passes. Hearing is continued till September twenty-eighth at six-thirty P M.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Lynch, are you back?
I am back.
Okay, and Mr. Armenti, thank you. Next is to hear the appeal of James Ricardi and Sharon Ricardi, Post Office Box seven seven seven, Boylston, Mass. For a special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section four dash B to demolish an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling and one-car garage and reconstruct a new, single-family dwelling with an attached two-car garage upon property located at one four five R, North Quinn Sigma Ave. In the multifamily one district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate twenty-five, plot zero nine two zero zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Richard Ricker. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, this is Richard Ricker and I'm an attorney with a law office at eleven Maple Avenue here in Shrewsbury. And I am here representing Jim and Sharon Ricciotti, who I believe are with us by phone, if there are any questions that I may not be able to answer. This is, as the advertisement suggested, a request to demolish and reconstruct a single-family home at the subject premises. There would be no further encroachments into any of the setbacks. In fact, it's fractionally better on the eastern side of the property. The two-car garage should not be, as I said in my earlier discussions with you, as a matter of law, it shouldn't be considered an intensification, intensification of any non-conformity. As the courts have determined that to be, and I quote, "small-scale extensions." With respect to this particular request, because the lot also is five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three square feet and there is a slight increase in in the living space. As you can see, the concrete on the plot plan that is in your file, there, in addition to the garage, there's a, there's a small area that overhang where the concrete steps presently are that would be closed in to square off the house. That would be an increase of some living area of a small amount. So I again suggest to you that you are well within your rights to use the standard of whether the house after modification would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That being the standard that is the case that I spoke to you before about, which is also addressed by the town council's memo from before. And I'm just looking for it here. Oh, here it is. It is the Balalta case, Balalta versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Brooklyn. So we we look to the non-conformity, we determine whether there is an intensification. And then the courts say that you reach a determination as to whether this reconstruction is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would suggest to you that it's not. This is a single-family house, it will remain a single-family house. Jim and Sharon Ricciotti want to demolish and rebuild this house and live there themselves. It would just be the two of them. The the fact is that they looked at this in terms of a renovation and determined because of a termite factor that it was too far gone and they needed to ask to demolish and and rebuild. So I would point out that there's no nuisance or detrimental value to this whatsoever. The house is still fairly small. It is, as you can see from the elevations that have been filed with this request, it's attractive, it's better looking than than what is there now. He specifically kept the roof pitch and the and the height down to the present level in order not to cause any kind of blockage to the neighboring views. So they've been mindful of that in their request to just build a new, single-family house here. So with that, if you have any questions, we'd be pleased to answer them.
Okay, Mr. George? Mr. George? Okay, Ms. Cassette?
Looks like he's trying, but I I have no comment.
Oh, wait, okay, you're back, okay, sorry, go ahead, Paul. Do you have any, any questions?
None at this time.
Okay, okay, Ms. Cassette, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I I have no questions either.
Okay. Mr. Mulcahy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
And Ms. Lynch?
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Does anyone, anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this?
My name is David Hartman, I'm a an abutting property owner with the Quinzigman Townhouses behind the proposed residence. First, you know, we've discussed it and it looks very nice and I think we'd welcome the Ricardis as neighbors. I think our only, and this roofline looks good. And I think they've done a nice job. Our couple of comments, though, it seems like they're going to be really tight on the parking. And I think, you know, we just asked that the builders or the contractors, you know, respect our driveway that, you know, we paid for and if there's damage to it, you know, obviously it's repaired and all that kind of thing.
If I could, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Ricker, yeah.
I'm sure that the Ricciottis would work with you, Jim Ricciotti is a is a contractor himself. If he's on the line, I'm sure he will verify that they'll be, they'll be mindful of that. Are you with, are you with us, Jim? I I know I saw his name throughout the hearing, but throughout the meeting, but.
Actually, he's, his mic's off, so he probably. Yeah.
Star six, Jim. But I I I can be comfortable making that representation. Sure, they'll be mindful of that. He's he's been mindful as as he's started this process and he's, he has already started to got the interior of the premises because of the termite problem, so I'm I'm sure I will, I will again mention it to him as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I have a comment for the caller, the butter. I would like also for him to keep in mind that the existing garage is just a one-car garage and the garage that will be added is a two-car garage. So you might be worried that there's, you know, one space for a car being removed, but in it's it's essentially within the garage, so I wouldn't be as concerned as you might think.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, any any other comments?
Yes, my name is John Barron and I'm the owner of one forty-seven North Quinn Sigamond, which is the abutting property on the north side of two forty-five R. I just have two questions, we would welcome the Ricardis as neighbors and I'm sure this is going to be a nicer property than the house that's currently on the lot. The canopy and roof patio of the current dwelling are not shown in the topographical drawing that was provided of the lot. So I just want to confirm that the length and width of the new roof deck, which is an additional feature, because there's no roof deck now, will will not exceed the dimensions of the patio of the current dwelling. And if so, can we have the minutes reflect this?
Mr. Ricker?
That is correct. And there there is no further encroachment and and yes, that that structure is over that concrete pad.
Okay, great, and the other request is just to confirm, do you plan to leave the fence that's along the abutting property to the north in place during the demolition and the construction? And if so, if the fence becomes damaged by construction or demolition, or if it needs to be temporarily removed during construction, do you agree to replace it? And if so, can we have the minutes reflect that as well?
Attorney Ricker?
Mr. Ricciotti has contacted me by text and he said, yes, he does intend to keep it there. And yes, he will repair any damage.
Great, thanks, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, there being no further questions or comments, we will take it under advisement and move to vote on the appeal.
Thank you.
Board, any discussions needed? Okay. Okay, can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. George, how do you vote?
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, another butter, uh-oh, did we close?
The hearing has been closed. So we really can't take any more testimony on this matter.
I was trying to unmute myself, so it was just a quick question, but.
You'd have to do that after the meeting is over between the parties, as the hearing has been closed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Cassette?
Aye.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Aye.
Ms. Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye, motion passes unanimously. Our final six-thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of John E. Salem, one eighty Barstow Lane, Tolon, Mass. For a variant and or special permit to the town of Shrewsbury zoning by law under section four dash B to demolish and reconstruct an existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling upon property located at six Kings Point Drive in the Residence B two district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate forty-five, plot zero one four zero zero zero.
Mr. Chairman, one more time, Richard Ricker.
Welcome back, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Richard Ricker, I'm an attorney with a law office at eleven Maple Avenue. And I'm here requesting, I mean, representing the Salem family who is going to live at this location. I believe on the line with us, probably by phone, is John Salem. We also have Brian Stern, who is Stein, who is the architect. And Mike McGovern, who is the builder, I saw his name up there as well, in case there's questions that I cannot answer. This also is it's almost a repeat. We're talking about a demolition and reconstruction again. This is at the end of Kings Point Drive, which, as you know, is a long, narrow peninsula that reaches out into the lake. The, there have been several houses that have been demolished and rebuilt on this Kings Point Drive. And I would note that they are large, they are they are tasteful, but yes, they are large. The this is a request for a special permit in light of the town council letter, which addresses the issue of whether a variance is needed because of the increase of the house size more than fifty percent. So we would respectfully move to withdraw the request for variance at this time. Because this is in accordance with Balalta. Again, this is a request for a special permit. Now, when we look at the special permit, we look and and try to determine what Now, when we look at the special permit, we look and try to determine what the what are the nonconformities that exist here with the present structure. Well, the nonconformities are first and foremost, the property, because it's at the end of Kings Point Drive, is, it's got a twenty-five point seventy-two inch frontage on Kings Point Drive, so it's got deficient frontage. The, in addition to that, the rear yard setback is impacted, the deck reaches six feet eight inches from the water's edge of Lake Quinn Sigman. That deck, with the proposal before you, is being pulled back to thirteen point four feet from lake. There is a proposal for a new deck, new patio, obviously a new house. In addition to the house, they would add a two-car garage, which, as you can see from the elevations that we have given you, it's a very tasteful house and garage that are proposed here. There is no intensification of the rear yard, in fact, it actually proves it based on the deck. On the frontage, that remains the same, so there's really, there's no intensification of a nonconformity here. This is a house that, the lot coverage requirement is thirty percent, this house will be twenty-two percent lot coverage. It is, the proposal is for the same building height as what is there presently, which is thirty-five feet, which is allowed. The side yard setback is ten feet in this area, and the proposal is ten and a half feet. And the front yard setback is thirty feet, and the setback proposed is thirty point five feet. So, and the lot area is twelve thousand five hundred square feet is required, and what is existing is nineteen thousand one square feet, that remains the same. You have three letters from neighbors in your file which support this proposal. The neighbors are the immediate neighbors on Kings Point Drive, they're the only ones that could be impacted by any kind of building at this area. Again, I would suggest to you that the two-car garage is something that is fairly inconsequential in terms of this proposal, because under the Borkland case, it is not an increase in the nonconformity of a premise. So, we are not intensifying or increasing the extent of any existing nonconformities. And so therefore, I would suggest to you that we look to whether or not this proposal is in any way detrimental to the neighborhood or detrimental to the neighbors. Well, I think what you have before you is their own statements that they support this. And I therefore would suggest to you that there is no nuisance value, there's no detrimental value, there's no noise or any other type of problem that can be generated by this single-family house. And it is, again, a single-family house, which is accorded special protections under the zoning bylaw. And I again point to the town council letter which supports the contention that this is indeed a special permit. And with that, if you have any questions or comments, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr George? Mr George? Okay, Ms Cassette?
Mr Chairman, if I could, please. If I could provide further comment. I, and Bernie Cahill, would like to retract our comments from the encroachment from the plane department in our comment letter that we have provided you. After a discussion with Richard Ricker this afternoon, we have decided that we are pulling those departmental comments and that they no longer should be adhering to any sort of stipulation that you guys proceed with.
Okay, thank you, Ms Cassette?
Hold on one moment, because, okay, I just want to make sure my comment isn't about that. Okay, so if, well, now that this is a special permit, I did have a question. This is similar to other appeals we've heard that have an existing structure that's being demolished and rebuilt. What makes it different is, different from the others, is the large plot of land in which it sits. So I'm just curious as to why, you know, it's an opportunity to go ahead and conform and it looks to me like there's plenty of room to do that. I'm just curious as to know why it wasn't, the structure wasn't just moved within those setbacks.
And I have the same question, Mr Chairman.
Okay, well, if I could. The fact is that over a year of planning has been put into this location and to the tweaking of this particular plan. With respect to the neighbors to the north, which are the Rooney's, there is a grass area that today our client would like to maintain to the best of their ability. It's a vegetated area, there's gardens there, there, the Rooney's house actually is close to the lot line.
I see it.
Yeah, so it's kind of deceptive, if you move this house closer to them, you really are going to tighten up space between these two houses. And the second, the secondary issue here is that my client is installing an elevator in the property and wants to take advantage of the topography as it approaches the lake and make it easier for him as he ages to get down to the water side with an elevator. So that is part of this proposal, is to make this more accessible for him in terms of reaching down to the water side, where there is like a flat area down by the water, but there's a fairly steep slope to get down there from the top of the hill. The other point that I would make about this is that if you were to move this house back, as you suggest, it would be frankly sitting on top of the Rooney's house, because this is, this lot is higher than the Rooney's. If you move back on this lot, it makes this house, which will be thirty-five feet high, which is the same as the other houses down there. But it makes this house tower over the Rooney house, and they don't want that, my client doesn't want that. And frankly, it would require moving the garage, which actually gives a little bit of a buffer for the naughts. And they're happy with that. So this has been a kind of a very friendly process that placed this house at its location. It is an improvement, I would suggest to you respectfully, it is an improvement because it pulls the deck back. They do have plans to improve the water quality issues from drainage down there, and part of that is where the present deck is and where that slope is, there's going to be a lot of work done there in order to improve the drainage issues and improve the water quality that comes off the lot. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that helps a lot, explain the rationale, thank you.
Mr Mulcahy, any other questions? Ms Lynch?
No questions, no comments, thank you.
Okay, does anyone in attendance wish to be heard on this? I'll give it a slow fifteen seconds, so it doesn't, if anyone's trying to unmute, it doesn't happen again. Based on who I see here, I don't think so. Any discussion among the board? Before we close the hearing?
None for me.
Okay, so there'll be no further questions or comments, you will be notified of our decision and we will vote immediately following. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr George? Ms Cassette?
Aye.
Mr Mulcahy?
Aye.
Ms Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much and good night.
Okay, thank you, the only other piece of, two pieces of business left. Back on the appeal of hang on one second. Three twelve A South Quinn Sigman, we need to withdraw, they voted to withdraw, they moved to withdraw the variance, we need to vote on that. Can I get a motion? To accept to withdraw the variance?
Move to accept to withdraw the variance.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr George?
One of the variances.
Yeah, no, the fifty percent variance, yeah, sorry. Ms Cassette?
Aye.
Mr Mulcahy?
Aye.
Ms Lynch? Ms Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye, motion to withdraw is unanimously approved. Last item, new business. We need to appoint a vice chair after twenty-five years on the board or twenty-three years on the board for the first time ever. We needed one and didn't have one last month. So I nominate Mary Beth as vice chair, unless anyone else. And I'll also just move the slate of Mr George and myself as clerk and chair again, unless anyone else wants either of those jobs. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the current slate and the addition of Mary Beth Lynch as vice chair.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Mr George? Ms Cassette?
Aye.
Mr Mulcahy?
Aye.
Ms Lynch?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye, you sure no one else wants any of these jobs?
No.
Okay.
You don't want it?
One more motion to adjourn. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn, and thank you, Paul George, for your years of service.
Both of you, yeah.
And I'll take it there's a second, all in favor, aye, I'll take it by acclamation and I'll say the meeting is adjourned.
All right, thanks everyone, good night.
Okay, good night.